I don't have the details on the services yet.
I did. Visiting Wednesday night, I believe it was from six to eight at, uh, make it beautiful, right? And the service is 11:00 AM Thursday morning, so I know the family would love to be on. And they, uh, I'm, uh, best been sing us on, so I'll, I'll definitely be there for that. Special time for that family celebrating this, this, we had, had wrongness. Anything else wrong? You got anything? Uh, let's do observe moments of silence, and that could be however you would like to use that time, but I certainly would ask you to give the family a moment of silence. So if you can stand with them, please. After that, I will ask you to wish the people to be with the ladies in our place.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As has been advertised, we have, uh, two public hearings tonight. First one in Chester, I think we can have that public hearing, close it out, and then open the other one, is that correct?
I think that is correct.
And so we will declare, uh, the commissioners to be in session for the public hearing. This public hearing is the proposed amendments to the subdivision ordinance, uh, and as you know, we have, as a board, have asked these planning boards to review, uh, a number of our ordinances, and we've taken those sort of in the, in the, in an order defined by this group and, and carried to the planning board by commissioners to take their latest orders, and so that is where we are tonight, Chester.
Just, uh, in an effort to help with Matt's presentation, you have two handouts. One is, uh, looks like this, Macon County Subdivision Ordinance, it actually has one little yellow space on the front of it where the word amended is highlighted. That is the, what I call the red line or strikeout copy, which shows the changes which have been made. And then you have a second document that, um, is referred to as an ordinance of Macon County Commissioners making amendments to subdivision ordinance of County Macon, Carolina. Uh, that would be the actual final document, should the board, after this public hearing being tried, uh, make the changes that have been recommended by the board.
The changes have been made since we were first beginning to change.
With, with one exception, let me, let me tell you, at the very end, the very last page of the strikeouts, you'll see the effective date referred to, the 25th day of January 2010, and the adoption date was the 25th day of January 2010. That was from the last amendment, and obviously that needed to be changed to the 25th day in both of those places.
So Matt Mason is here, he's our kind of planner, we've asked Matt to come, and we, of course, we've been over this, uh, once, and we have, uh, had the opportunity to take this Wednesday and review it through the past 30 days, and so the purpose of tonight is a public hearing. If anybody wants to speak to it, um, the document I received from our executive, Mr. Hagan, no, no one signed up to speak to that, so if you're here and you were unaware that you need to sign up, we'll let you know, we will allow you to speak. So, you want to speak to?
I'm speaking on the cell phone.
Okay, so Matt? Turn it forward.
Thank you, gentlemen. The, uh, planning board, as you know, is painstakingly gone through this detailed by detail. Uh, with documents in Chester, Chester's not changed any format except for a couple technical issues. And he's asked me to be prepared to answer any questions you might have on any of the insertion or the reason, or the reasoning behind it. I've also got Derek, uh, rolling in, our vice chairman for the planning board. Any questions that I can answer? Can you start, I will.
Yeah, I would provide the board that, uh, the ordinance itself requires the planning board periodically review this particular ordinance, uh, with a mind towards, uh, looking at what sort of problems, if any, uh, are happening with this ordinance in the real world, and trying to address those problems that come up. It appears to me that that's precisely what most of these changes are, is to address real world issues that come up with me.
Which is what we asked him to do. We appreciate that. Gentlemen, we, he has specific questions about it, I know most of you read this, probably more than once. If you have questions on that, it's sort of open for us, or Matt, if you have anything that you feel like you need to address specifically, if you do that at this.
I think I did, um, address most everything in the Highland Committee, the major. We talked about the appeals process and how we're going to believe some of that for developers, uh, property owners. The other one that everybody changed was bonding. We're now looking at cash bonding and cash to check for that for bond agreements. Um, there's a, on minimum lot sizes, we've taken that out if you have either a community water incentive system or municipal water, sewer, water. And then the final major thing, we looked at its compaction, um, we clarified a lot of that line, which is a lot easier to read or point. So any questions, uh, the opinions, requests?
Anyone else, uh, please, would work in the planning board and their recommendations?
I'm very pleased. They, we went through, like I said, big job by detail, they listened, every concerned with that, and I had Terry, Kevin, and Matt. Even some of the members, for example, on off doing a survey, having to deal with on day to day basis, and even, even the company's good head on day to day. Took all his concern and consideration, I think that was the man for it.
Any comment you had just now?
On subdivision?
On this water, uh, certain things.
Uh, probably, uh, the, uh...
He thought he should do a pass.
Seth, listen and say, "I believe, brother."
I'll go. Do a, like, 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 a, like,
I've got a map here that kind of shows you the coverage that it will project the blue and the pink stat.
Is Verizon, most people here in this area, Verizon?
Verizon has not made an application to go on the site yet, but often we'll have an anchor tenant and then the others will follow.
Let me ask you that question. Darrell, I know you probably don't know where Darrell is leading to talk about that. If he was there and Darrell had a Verizon phone, could he still get out with AT&amp;T? Would it roam and pick that up?
It would not.
Even on 911 call?
Even a 911 call, yeah. They would have no service. But the way the industry's moving right now, I would not, once this tower goes up, I would suspect that you would start to see the other carriers follow suit very quickly. You've seen, unfortunately, in the past several years, we've had a lot of upgrades to the systems, keeping up with going from a phone to really a little portable computing device. But now that carriers are starting to come back to the rural areas and starting to expand the network out.
That's not what I'm concerned, I'm concerned for it, but just, how many people in here have AT&amp;T? Have any have Verizon? Everybody else.
And Verizon knows that and when the site goes up-
I'm not making that noise. This is stopping me a lot of help.
And the great thing about that is the tower's going to be owned by Pegasus. And they don't, they're not concerned about competition between carriers or anybody. There's available space for everybody and anybody that wants to go on.
In my mind, I have you.
Absolutely.
And a little city thing, you have to put a light on?
No.
Go put a fine drink on?
No.
Actually, what they did, Mr. Hayden, this, Pegasus puts out, they will lose the property. It's actually, here's Miss Walden. Going through the handout a little more. We have on the fourth page, I think it is, we've got a picture that looks like this. That's the person who is drawing. I feel there's several questions today through this week. A lot of more designs, is it Montpel or is it Montpel? Tower's going to be 175, 170 feet tall, it's 400, 175. You've got a question on what an elevation looks like on it, I think they have it in the table. You might see it coming back from like legislature too, coming downhill, coming front, front.
I know that area in there pretty well.
The-
Is this right above Delmonte, actually?
It's across the road.
Across the road of Delmonte?
No, it's, you turn down Rainbow Springs Road. It's up on the ridge, actually, between Rainbow Springs Road and Sixty-Four.
So you couldn't see the tower coming so important to it?
You wouldn't see a lot of it. Now, the one thing I want you to think about too is it's got weird potential. And my personal opinion, it's got weird potential.
You make a tell you, you just hired anytime to go to charge?
That I can't convince you, certainly it's face over there. The folks at Pegasus.
I can answer that. The answer is yes, we can provide a letter to you there. That the available rad puts, the lower rad center is what you guys are looking for anyway. But yeah, we put off the space available to you on free charge.
We didn't get enough of them.
We also in the packet have a letter from David D., Director of Emergency Services, requesting that issue. And also the fire chief that, part of the day, Dr. Allesma.
When do you think the tower will be installed if everything goes through?
If everything goes through, the lease coming in and everything, what do you think we're looking at time wise? Will it still be?
I'd have to check the timeline, I know everything is different to the point, so I would imagine. Just guessing, somewhere around the end of the year, first of the year.
One thing that I do want to remind, for some of you minded around the public, this site was after permitted, it was 2005. And then, of course, the economy changed and the construction was working on it, we were still in 2005.
Sure. Question is, do we need forms to serve up access road?
Definitely.
Reason I ask that question, because another tower or an access road service is involved.
Some land value maybe, but those things affect the factuation. They're much weight in each year, that's why it's hard, it's hard to do that unless you have all that information. But by the time you have all that information, just a year is over and the new year begins, so you have to make a prediction with that information. I think that's why Richard White said we save budget, you know, for all the fire departments. Budget on the same factuation you had this year probably ran into these. We have two different numbers, uh, one over there, we were looking at the already up. I'm trying to think of some other numbers that the fire department had, but last week.
I, I beg to differ, those numbers were both county numbers. One from 2011, one from 2013, they were forty million dollars, uh, in part. I didn't make those up, I can show you whether they ended up to the, to the fire commission.
Well, there was a mistake somewhere there, but, but what we've seen, what Maury has done, and we've looked back to see the factuation was the last four or five years, and it has changed poorly for not that much. So, I don't know whether that number came from that number that was in there. So, uh, whether it came from the finance department or the purchase or the sale department. I hope it didn't come from the base, because I didn't figure it out.
It, it is a kind of, we can't, we can't change this or, I'll tell you, we'll, we'll agree to review it mid-year.
We appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I would say this, that the, the fire chapel, the fire department is one of the oldest and not the oldest fire departments in the county. And the amount of service that they do compared to the budget that they have is extraordinary how they're able to get that done for the amount of money that they collect. You only have about two hundred thousand dollars of property taxes. I know you have some fundraisers and so forth, but your area covers a lot to make account and to do it for the amount of money that they collect.
Chuck, I'll just go give you a panel of the facts here, the second reason exactly stated. It is obvious from the number of colleagues you are in, the several revenue that you bring in, that you're doing outstanding a job, and you're a top community commissioner, extremely proud for that reason. You're getting a lot done with lots, especially in terms of fire management. I won't make any known fat in front of anybody, I was definitely in favor of the tax increase. And I can't, I'm a little withdrawn, I don't know the reasons behind that, I'm sure. If the funding becomes issued next year, I definitely put that in, and I assure you, it's going to be. If you don't feel that you need money, I'm not going to excuse you. And if you get to the end of the pitfall, it's my country, it's my homeland, it's your country. Again, I feel bad that it happened. As my mom says, vacation is the very luxury for this kind of vacation. Yeah, I just feel bad about it, but again, very proud of you.
Chuck, I mean, with him, with the fire department, we used to know that Chuck Sutton was just a messenger. And he made that call, and he had important colleagues on his own telephone. So, we thought everybody was going the same way. So, if anybody was going to take any heat here, it should be the county. You gotta give some bad ones. The same way that I think you got committee, or committee, committee something in the year, uh, also.
Thank, thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Right, Chuck. We have Janet Watson, who is with, who wants to address the community care clinic.
Hey, Mary.
Uh, fine, thank you.
The reason I'm here today is, uh, I started Orange Community Care Clinic in Highland in 2006. Uh, my stomach was hurting, so I went up there and I filled out an application, you know, to see if I was approved for the clinic. So, I went up there for 2006 till 2009, until they opened up the clinic down here. Uh, they didn't really do anything for me. My test results come back, my blood test results come back, uh, the work, the work reacting that is associated with my kidney. Uh, they was high all the time, and they didn't do nothing about it. They wouldn't find me a kidney doctor for me to go to, uh, they wasn't concerned about me. So, whenever they opened up the clinic down here in 2009, I went there, started going there because it was closer for me, because I live here in Franklin. And in 2010, there was a spot that showed up on my face. Uh, I showed it to the people at the clinic. They didn't, they weren't concerned about that. And so, I had to do without, um, any medical attention, um, concern about my face. And then, in 2012, uh, let's see, in October of 2011, I applied for Medicaid, because I didn't have no insurance. So, with applying for Medicaid, you have to wait, you know, to see if you want to be approved. So, my oldest sister told me to contact the vocational reputation in Silva to see if they could do many things, you know, for me to see a kidney doctor, because I was concerned about my kidneys. And so, I contacted Carol Rezey over there, and she sent me an appointment to come up, you know, and to see her, you know, to see if I would be eligible for, you know, for the program. So, uh, I've also got spinal stenosis, uh, I don't even know if I was born with it, or maybe it was caused by, you know, an injury. Um, they told me that that was the only thing that they would be able, you know, to help me, you know, with is my back. So, I was still concerned about my kidneys, and, uh, Carol Rezey talked to her director to see, you know, I could see a, you know, a kidney doctor. So, she talked to her director, and he decided, you know, he would go ahead and approve me, you know, to see a kidney doctor. So, I started seeing a kidney doctor. Uh, I set an appointment up with him in April. In the meantime, I called, um, Mr. Hirschman up there in Highland, up there, Jerry Hirschman, and I told him that, uh, you know, I got, you know, some help to see a kidney doctor. And whenever I contacted him, uh, I went back to the clinic, and they told me that, see, whenever you go inside the clinic, uh, they got the doors closed. And they asked you what your name is, and she said, well, you can't come to the clinic anymore. And I asked them how to. They said, well, Jerry Hirschman, since your letter out in February said that you was thrown out of the clinic. Because they weren't going to tolerate my behavior anymore. But like I said, I found I was approved this year in February for my Medicaid, so I went to Dr. Toy about the spot on my face. It was chinks, it was skin cancer. I had to have, I had to have my face readjusted, and they put thirty-six stitches in my face. You know, just like I said, you know, they wanted fifty thousand dollars, you know, to run the clinic. And whenever I read it in the paper, I really got upset, and I really got mad, because they didn't help me. You know, um, but I just want to come tonight, you know, to see, I know it's too late, they've already got some money, but maybe even as much, you know, decide, you know, uh, I don't even know if they help other people, because they didn't help me. I have to live with my problems, my kidney problems, both my kidneys are damaged. I have to live with it, I will have to watch. And I hope the skin catcher don't come back on my face, because, you know, it's kind of embarrassing, you know, to go out in public when people start it, you know.
Mr. President, what is your opinion?
And that was, uh, that was all I had for the comment. The next gentleman, just wants approval of the agenda. Do we have anything that we need to add, the leader or anyone on the agenda?
I've got several, I'm sorry, guys. Number one, we took a real good look at the chairman, I probably recommend you report some presentations. I'd like to address a couple of issues going on with the planning board. And then due to the time of our staff here, would you be okay if we moved the point of two positions up at the same time?
I'd be fine with it. So, that's due to the planning board, and we do have a couple of staff members here. So, we must put eight, we'll take eight, B, planning board, I don't think permission to take. And we'll include in that, we'll move, uh, if you request, we'll move twelve A up with that. So, we'll, we'll do that.
Was it selected, never to fill that position? That position, no, it's in favor.
We got two positions, yeah. Number two, the policy in front of you, I'd like to introduce a resolution line authorizing county line survey. That would be, that's new business, that would be N, P and D, that would be, uh, county line survey. Okay, uh, number three, sorry, I've spent all day here. Ben Jackson, nine o'clock this morning, doing three meetings, doing things. Nine B, I would like to talk about, uh, property acquisition, how it's actually part.
It would make sense that it has been, already, already had action on that, we'll make that now.
One more, nine A. Jackson, to verify, we're talking about the pigback payments.
Yeah, I've had a chance to talk to, uh, the county attorney up there, once we're required. Pigback, and if, if you've already bought or another, another, uh, county or city has bought some equipment, you can pigback on the, there be it, and I'd have to do the due process again, if that's a good deal for the county. We did last year for two ounces, and the low bid was a company, all custom product body works. And since it's been less than a year, and the other, that it'll be a last, we're willing to allow us to pigback on that same contract we had last year, while the next two ounces have the same price we're talking about. In order to do that, the county attorney, correct, in order to do that, the board must do an advertisement that we can consider pigback. At each ten day, the board takes any action of that, so.
Pipe lines, make a wave.
What we'd be asking the board to do is allow us to go ahead and advertise for that possible waiver, bring it back to the board and ask for your consideration.
Just as a point of clarification, county manager, would these be the same year models, everything the same?
This would be a year, year deal. There's same, the same, the same available, but set at two thousand thirty, two thousand thirty-three.
County, that is new business, so let's make that ten E, call that annual, this is. Oh, God. Okay, anything else to add?
Just, I'm a report for presentation, Mr. Chairman, the latest and greatest new veteran.
So, we'll make a portion presentation, we'll make that eight C.
There's a, there's a thing about that, but no one looks higher than state state, but they ain't no way, no less than.
Yeah, I would say more potential presentation, like this, like during the time we did.
Yeah. That's important. County manager? Make that eight D. Any changes or conclusions?
I'd like to add, boy, I'd like to make a motion, we're going to talk about that award that's tied to state standards. I know you're as massive as that's got, there's certain planning boards, type, that's just, you might say, you want to make the county board commissioners, I'll finish that.
Seriously. Going for that as a, a motion. That's okay, but let's plan, yeah, we'll take the ten F, but.
I'd like to, yeah, blank, I don't know, they said higher, state stage.
Yeah, we'll make that ten F, we'll just set. Yeah, one. Doc Thompson, as you were hearing, were you here in regards to the seat, the seat that's open for Southwesters?
Correct, yes, sir.
Hey, gentlemen, we did, we moved that up, uh, under, we're doing the handling of under presentation. We moved that up, I think I thought that was on the I D register. And that way we can move, uh, eleven twelve C, I'm sorry. Let's move that up.
Motion to approve the.
Anything else?
Motion number four, my, that's kind of just packed up, that way you know, we're adding them as well. If it comes in agenda, I'm going to add your places tonight, I added number five, and I apologize for the, it wasn't clear at all. She emailed me a bit.
So, we do, we do have those, the special minutes, four, four and five. They'll all be in consent agenda unless you want to remove them.
We'll speak the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
All right, we have a second to approve the agenda as amended. Motion and a second, any discretion? All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Motion. That motion. Um, and so, the trustees, we'll make that E under proportion presentation, Southwesters. Okay. We have, proudly have Stephanie Smathers and Rebecca Schilling here, that are going to make a presentation to us about the Highlands Middle School Courtyard, ladies, thank you for your patience, and we welcome you to our meeting, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm just going to interject, uh, Dr. Schilling and I have met, I'm a middle school teacher at Highland School. Um, we met six years ago when I was, um, teaching the sixth grade curriculum. Um, the mountain garden club does a project with the sixth graders where they bring butterflies in. Uh, the kids go through the process of metamorphosis. Um, the garden club has a, an area at the front of the school that they maintain, and our students actually go in and learn about the planting process, as they plant herbs, butterfly food, and other things in the courtyard. Um, and then sixth grade got taken, back away from me, I'm just seventh and eighth grade now. Um, so, our community made an outdoor classroom, and we started by listening to a teacher. Um, Miss Smathers said, could we do something about this space? And if you look at the courtyard behind these sixth graders who are releasing their butterflies, you can see, you can get a glimpse that it needed some help. Um, the middle school courtyard is the area between the main school building, which is on the right, and the middle school building on the left, and it provides the main access to the middle school building, um, at our school. Uh, there were several problems. Um, drainage was a huge problem, uh, the area would flood whenever we had a heavy rain. There was no handicap access from the parking lot, and we had inadequate seating. Uh, there were some picnic tables, and still are, uh, but when teachers wanted to hold the class out there, there was really not enough seating to do that. We had crumbling concrete, um, there was a large brick area where the bricks were buckling. Uh, the soil that was there was horse soil with patchy weeds, we had dying trees. So, we started by imagining what the space could become, that if we were to change it into an outdoor classroom, how would we do that? And we imagined we could create new planters that would be outlined by small boulders. We would put in stepping stones so students could get in amongst native plants that would be planted there, bring in boulders, create a stone bench, add shrubs, add, add new trees. And we brought in professional help. Uh, architect Wendy Stiles of Summit Architecture donated her time and did the architectural plans at no charge. Jim Tate of Tate Landscaping donated his time, not only in concept development, but also in supervising every stage of the project as we went forward. We defined our goal, uh, we wanted to create an outdoor classroom where every year about seven fifty students would be participating in hands-on lessons about the environment, and targeting students, um, in grades six through eight, and also K and first grade, and twenty or more high school art students. There are lots of benefits about outdoor learning. Um, anybody who has a middle schooler knows that in grades six through eight, there are tremendous stresses. There are biological stresses, there are psychological stresses, and nature offers healing. There've been studies done that show that after kids spend an hour outside, if they come back in on their asked-to-do memory skill, um, activities, they, they perform twenty percent better. Uh, nature stimulates children to use their senses fully, and vitamin D, the sunshine vitamin, actually has a lot of health benefits. Lessons learned outdoors truly can broaden interests and change lives. We put in a team for project administration, our chief financial officer was our principal, Miss Smathers coordinated student and teacher involvement, I handled progress reports, and we had a wonderful bookkeeper, Mrs. Jenkins. We started fundraising, the students held a lemonade in the courtyard, uh, in June of 2012. The public was invited, the students gave tours and explained the plans for renovating the courtyard. We started networking within our community, we submitted grant applications to a lot of organizations. And we set a timeline, we said if we had enough money, we'd like to do the demolition and put in the initial hardscape in October, the following spring, um, we'd like to build the sitting wall and add the stepping stones, do the planting fertilizer in May, hold a second lemonade in the courtyard so everybody could see the progress in June, and then install a weather station, produce, um, this fall. We did raise enough money, we were very fortunate, so we were able to do the demolition in October. And the initial hardscaping went in, these are pebble-finished concrete, um, sidewalks. Uh, the drainage was improved, we added drains, um, six inches of good topsoil was riding. There are small boulders that outline the planters, um, and sixth grade students will be planting those planters this fall. This past April, the high school art students created ceramics for the sitting wall. They used a nature theme, they made birds, flowers, and tree branches. In April, we had enough money to go ahead and build the sitting wall, and if you look closely, you can see the student ceramics on the front of the sitting wall, and here's a close-up of the back of the sitting wall. And that sitting wall started being used as soon as the building was built. The courtyard renovations weren't complete, but, but the classroom was already being used. In May, the students started helping plant the outdoor classroom. Um, earlier in the day, Tate Landscaping had planted trees and native azaleas, um, and we, then our students came in and finished the planting, putting in about seven hundred trees. There was a follow-up article in Highland's newspaper, articles written by Madison Shandell, who is a rising ninth grade student. We had tremendous newspapers support for this project. There's a photo of Miss Smathers where the seventeen, seventh and eighth grade students have stayed after school to plant on May sixteenth. We held our second lemonade in the courtyard, um, on June tenth, and there was a feature article about it in the Highland newspaper, photos of the students who participated, and quotes from them. We've had many partners, you've seen the roles that our, our two newspapers have played. Our radio station helped create awareness about the project, also told us, uh, what type of weather station we should consider buying, one that's durable and dependable. We have sixteen organizations that provided funding and/or services for this project, as well as individual donors. Here's how the money broke down, um, we have, we, uh, we could go through it, but you can see it on your screen and read it more quickly, then I can even say it, but you can see it was community-wide support, and it includes support from Macon County Academic Foundation for, um, the weather station equipment. This is what the courtyard looks like today. We're happy to say that it was completed on time and under budget. We cannot thank Jim Tate enough, um, for his wise management of the project and for donating his services. It's been incredible. And there are enough funds remaining for five years of maintenance. An outdoor classroom can be used for learning any of the major things that, uh, students study, and thanks to our community, this is the new outdoor classroom we have in school. I'm just excited to be using this and, and I'll just work for the county school. Um, I will be definitely using it when, uh, Mr. Tate puts in the weather station sometime, and, um, the junior data and SGA put a middle store, S M, involved in the interactive, would help maintain the reading, um, so that they can learn about hand-on gardening, and maybe some of them can even become future partners, or learning as partners. Um, it just provides a great place for me taking off now, when we're studying flyouts, or a place to just sit outside and say, hey, guys, let's just enjoy the weather. So, I'm hearing in your homework, saying in this, in this classroom, it's always about the same furniture. They can actually get out of it at night. We can also use it for guest pictures. Uh, for example, I've had Ann Campbell, uh, who worked for the Audubon Society at the time, she came, went down, unfortunately it was raining, uh, but it provides an outdoor place for you to do a group activity with kids. Um, we also have Patrick Brennan from the biological station, did, actually, the day it was put up, it was usable. He was actually with the third graders presenting bugs and, and things like that. So, it just provides a great place for, for K-12, for Highland's, to use an area that's not in four concrete walls. Um, and I definitely cannot have done it without Patrick Shaw and Mr. Tate, they just provided a more, so this is new.
And the drain works great, because that's about there today.
Oh, does it?
Follow the flood out, and that took about two hours.
Good.
It looks great.
Eyewitness report, thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you, Jim, thanks, we need to, yeah, for the moment. This is, this is an excellent example of, uh, private folks doing a job to help protect the community in school. One of the wonderful projects this is, I'm watching Christian Tate, we have a little presentation, ladies. Christian Tate, would you like to do that?
Let me just, uh, say, come on, walk around here, that, that we're giving the accolades this evening, but you two are much, much, much more deserving of what these two have done with their own time, their own giving, their own funds, to help improve, to make the county community just tremendous. The pies are watering up, it's not the other front, because it's hot here. But thanks to each of y'all, it's just a little Macon County.
Oh, what a great honor. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Again, as a next chair, I mean, if you're going to talk to us.
Please, please, the table, can you talk?
Yes.
I hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to shake the rest of our meeting board, if you, you have a problem, you have a question.
I'm kind of curious about the budget that the two products, you know.
You're welcome, Steve. Uh, the next item is Christian Tate has requested, it's in time to discuss, uh, activities, the planning board, and that's eight B.
So, Christian Tate. Gentlemen, I've got two things on this that I'd like to discuss. One is I want to give you a note of where they are now, and I would also like, in our last meeting, we discussed, uh, the flood plan, which I think Mr. Tate was going to bring up later on in the meeting, but unless we change it at that point, I'd like to direct them to go ahead and vote on it, since they'd like to stay and take action this time. Again, that may change later tonight, but that was on my agenda tonight, so I would like to just note heads, to give them the consensus to, uh, go ahead and take a vote on that, if it's needed, bring it back to us, and we'll get that off quick, like, so, Dave.
I believe six, well, we'll be, we'll be part of the end of the day, maybe an alderman will be.
We may be.
But I think it's.
I think, I think there has been a tremendous amount of, uh, community involvement in this, and keep holding them up.
Whether we take action on it or not.
Would you ask the message for consensus to tell the planning board to do?
We know they've had discussions, we're going to strike that, you do. Let me ask you, what year is working on them now, the sign orgs?
They started that last month, we're on top on that next, so when they moved off the flood plan, they moved them on the sign. They're not, probably not far off completion on that, there's a lot of questions, there was at the last meeting that I was unable to answer, so, uh, Mr. Jones is going to help me get those questions answered, so we can get back on that. And then after that, they have the high, high impact ordinance on the review list, and I'll submit a recommendation. Following that, that we might take them off of reviewing ordinances, and I would like personally to build an agreement that they reviewed. they review, um, all of the lands that Macon County owns, uh, vacant lands, and give us proposals on what uses is MIC for them, or if there might be excess property that the county cannot do. So, that is topics that I've been on for several.
Have we got water on the horizon this time too? Planting purposes? I just heard out of the town, and they're speaking to, the town has started, and they've looked, uh, some resources to break as far as the water, the population increases. I think the county is going to be highly involved in that very, uh, I think.
And that's the, from what I've, the discussions I heard at the last autumn meeting, that's, of course, W.K. Dixon presented their study to the town that did involve the population projections and the effect that the population increase is going to have on the town's watershed in the future. And certainly, I, I think the town board was, was adamant about beginning discussions with regards to that plan as soon as possible.
I just think our, uh, I think it's good, and we'll, we'll direct them. My point is, uh, I want to get ahead of us, so I'd like to keep them on. If something underbelts, and my recommendation, and we, we want to do that ahead of mine.
I just know that that's current. They got that current.
Don't say that again. You won't stand for it. The plan we're going to go through, all the excess of land, county owns?
County owns. See if they can determine a future use for it, if there's no use for it, or whatever. I don't see.
And we don't, and we don't need it. What?
What are we doing with it? Let's, let's, yeah, I think there's two reasons.
I need to go to the front and do some damage.
I think there's two reasons. One is it relates to the tax value of property that been there, and we're not ever going to use it. And I don't know if there is any or not, but I think a review of it. I agree with you.
Yeah, I see that all, all the way.
And then, um, the other item I have on that we need to, uh, appointments. I think we have two now. We've got, uh, master, here we've got, we've got term of the last season, term is expired. He's, he's asked not to.
He's asked.
Term, last season.
Term is out.
Mr. Lewis Penland has asked to, uh, which one?
Lewis.
And then, uh, check your email, compare by check or email, or send out a letter on this recommendation.
I've got it. It says, uh, it says, uh, I'm sorry, I'm not able to attend the commissioners' meeting tonight. Uh, as you know, there are two vacancies on the planning board. Those two seats vacated by Royce Penland and myself. It is my understanding that Joe Dale and Ben Lester have both expressed interest in being on the planning board. I submit the appropriate applications. As the chairman of the Macon County Planning Board, I would encourage you to appoint Joe and Ben to the two vacancies, not for cause of where they stand on any one issue, but for cause that they both have an open mind and make recommendations for the planning commissioners. Uh, the recommendations, they may, will not be short-sighted, but instead will be based on how it affects the county and the county's operations. I appreciate the opportunity to serve the Macon County Planning Board and commission of support. I have a sort of respect for it. I call on you, the last one.
I know we've had, uh, since Carl's signed his name, but he began to give time.
It's on the agenda at the April or May meeting.
We've had three applicants on that agenda. So, please start, everybody's come up here. We put out, I'd like to make a motion for John Sherrill on the floor.
Uh, is there discussion, or are we in a motion stage?
Non, maybe not one of them being John Sherrill.
No, I'll say the motion.
I think we give representation.
And we'll say discussion, collect.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to.
Who's on from Highlands?
We have Bill here from Scaly Mountain, and then John Underwood from the town.
Phil Highlands has two people.
Two that are fairly.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, to put John Sherrill on as one of, uh, going to be appointed as the planning board, and he did, we did receive the, uh, application from him. So, certainly considered a discussion on Mr. Sherrill.
The thing, you know, there, we've had a couple of open boards since December, but I know we've had four or five open applications. David Culpepper, I think he's applied two or three times. John Sherrill, Danny McGahad, who I think is present, has an application in Loretta Newton, and Martin Gruberman. I don't know if my application is still active. And then, when this came up in April or May, we postponed it. And I didn't really understand why we postponed Carl's replacement, but in the last three weeks or month, we've had two new applicants. And I understand Carl's position as chairman of the board, ex-chairman of the board, of wanting to put these two on, but it's, in a matter of fairness, if these other people have applied, they're good citizens. I know David Culpepper personally, well, I know, and he's just opened a business down in Alto. John Sherrill has a business in Alto that he's opened in the last year. Also has business interest in Highlands, and I don't think this board has appointed anyone from Highlands. I think John Underwood comes to the Alderman.
We got Bill Futech.
Bill Futech, Scaly. That's, get those two mixed.
They'll tell you they're different.
They're different. That's like Alto and Franklin. They're, Bill Futech is not in the Highlands district. So, just as a matter of fairness to the residents of Highlands, two people who've had their application open for some time, I would make a motion for filling two positions, not only John Sherrill, but David Culpepper. Uh, so I would make a motion nominating.
We got, we got, we got a motion on the floor for, for John Sherrill. We'll have to vote on that.
Oh, okay. Well, we are appointing two positions.
That's correct.
Okay.
We have, uh, the motion is to, to appoint John Sherrill, uh, to the planning board. He is from Highlands. I don't.
I think, I think he works in Highlands, but he doesn't live in Highlands.
No, he is, uh, he's in the Highlands. He's on Arnold Branch. He's from Highlands precinct. But he has, he's just opened a, uh, food or a home market or a fruit stand or a big one down in Alto. So, he's done business here, and I think he's got a landscape lawn name that's good in some Highlands.
And he, he lives in Franklin now, isn't he?
He is. On Arnold Branch, in, in, sure, for getting that, uh, Highlands district.
District. I will, uh, follow you gentlemen on this recommendation. I am a big fan of Mr. Dale, who he is as a local coroner. So, whether, uh, I know we're not voting on that one. I am a huge friend of Bill, one of the two sixes.
If he looks at qualifications, I mean, Joe Deed.
Yeah, I know. Again, I know. I think if we all did, if all five of us took a flying ballot, we'd probably all five of us go up with the people.
I'm not knocking Joe Dale. Joe Dale's a great man, a great family, does a great service, and a great guy. He's already serving on the watershed council, so, and I don't think that Sherrill is serving on any communities, even though he's expressed interest. And, uh, I'm not, not to Joe Dale at all, a great man. But it just smells a little bit, we waited three weeks before this was called, to get his application, and then we're telling all the previous candidates, no, we're not interested in your service. So, motion standing.
Okay, we got, uh, motion second for John Sherrill. We, he has a discussion. All favor, Mr. Sherrill. Raise your right hand. Okay, opposed. Alright, motion passes. Uh, we have another seat, uh, to fill. We have, and that would be, I guess, for Mr. Penland. Mr. Penland's seat. Did you receive a letter from him, or is he, you got, so you got it right as well as.
Based on the fact that David Culpepper applied three times to the planning board, he's a local businessman, has his best head, was in this committee, I nominate David Culpepper.
Thank you. Great motion second for David Culpepper. Discussion on that. We're not all in favor of David Culpepper. Raise your hand. And opposed. It's not passed. We have other nominations for the pool of applicants. I'd like to make a motion for Mr. Joe Dale. Thank you. Joe Dale has been nominated for the planning board. Discussion on Joe Dale.
Phil, that being for the last quarter back there, it's just been, I think these other people deserve some thanks for the effort.
I agree. I think, uh, Joe's a great man, be a great, great planning board member. He, he's already serving on the watershed council, and it just, it just appears a little unusual that we'd only have his application on file for two or three weeks.
But did, but he, that's Mr. Penland, which we just found out about.
I noticed, yeah, I noticed that too. So, I didn't say it.
Mr. Sherrill, you just had the application.
Sure. Oh, yeah, Mr. Sherrill's had his application. So, I know.
And we just, we know. And we just found out about, I found out about Mr. Pen, a couple days ago.
I know, I know, I mean.
It's, it's.
I know, it's weird. Right, I was like, uh, serving on some of these things, like the watershed council and some of these other things. For me, I mean, maybe it's just me. I see these special interests. And it said on his application, and I read it, there's a conflict of interest. And maybe yours sites and all yours, it's not a conflict of interest in mine. It is.
Do you think it's conflict of interest for Joe Dale?
Being on boards like that, because you're pushing agendas, I'm working.
You ever been to the watershed council, Mike?
I went for it. I have, I've, I've probably served thirty, we've got thirty-seven thousand things to make in town, and that's basically.
Totally agree.
Couldn't agree more. And I think, well, anyway, we're, we're pointing up there. I know that.
He's the board of the G F having one, uh, on the watershed.
In fact, we have a motion on the floor for Mr. Joe Dale. Uh, and secondly, any discussion, any more discussion? All in favor of Joe Dale, see if I raise my right hand. Opposed?
I mean, I throw one to the chairman. That's, this, this is not the reason you're asking about, uh, Mr. Blasky, and why we kept him back on. And here they're going to be potentially, depending on the rest of this meeting, but potentially going to be voting on the, on the board at this next meeting. So, we're going to have two new people on there that haven't been associated with the conversations or the hearings on that that are going to be voting on it. So, that's how, yeah, that's how.
That's eleven members.
That's what we were looking at.
That's eleven members.
Down, just getting the minutes.
Carl's chairman. He's, he's not going to go back on.
It's eleven member board, somebody there.
I agree. We, we take the can down.
First of all, what you need to, Jim needs to thank for service to Carl, the last being Louis Penland, for the many years of service they've devoted to hours, the time that they've given to the planning board. Uh, two, two, two good members have, uh, have moved the agenda a little bit. And, uh, so whatever it means, Mr. Chairman, it's appreciated. Anybody that's served on the planning board, it's one of those boards that's a lightning rod, as we all know, and, uh, thank his job. And, and also thanks to both, both of those being, because they're the most tuned, recently serving chairman, to try that board, and provide a good thing. We appreciate it. So, I tried to talk to him, he goes, say, man, I think it's worth it.
Well, now, as, as to the status of the existing applications, after this action tonight, we need to notify those candidates?
I think.
I mean, normally do is ask them if they want to continue to be.
They, there's not a deadline on that.
But how do we notify, or how do we update that file?
Well, we can, and you, you know, I've asked like that before. There are more boards in the planning board, and when we have people apply, they can leave their application there for future.
Generally, generally, any application we receive, I simply keep on following until we get something from someone that states they no longer wish to be considered.
We have had some of the last that applied, be considered, and whatever reason decided that they didn't want to be considered, have asked for their applications.
Wait, no, we have some more. The board is coming up.
We will have one in November, and then another one this time. So, we'll have to.
It's a day with good.
There'll be good one in the morning.
Can they be reappointed now, or is it going to be a chance this time?
They'll be reappointed one more time if they will, sir.
If they will.
If they will, that's correct. Mike, if you want to, I can know.
Let, let me just, based upon the conversation, guys, it, it wouldn't hurt my feelings and all that, just take politics out of these appointments and, uh, just don't want to burst down first so fast on some of these boards. Just throw it out there.
Well, that's sort of the way I thought it would be.
This is one of the other problems that we started this, we started this rotation with that application. Uh, this is just another sign of those problems.
All right, anything else to do with that, you? Uh, AC, uh, is, uh, Mr. Blasky reported.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, real quick, just to mention what's going on. We talked today on conference call. It, it appears that the scenic budget plan has come back to meet the House somewhat. Uh, we're still struggling. Uh, they will not have a budget prepared by the, uh, by the end of June.
Different than July, yes.
Uh, they probably, uh, some of the things that we were happy with what the Senate does, the, the worst thing that we've seen, of course, is one effect, is the rural counties. And that is, uh, they're taking away of local development sales tax refunds, beginning January first, nineteen sixteen. This is fully implemented. It would be, uh, impact sixty point five million on the counties. Uh, another thing that's of concern for a rural county, uh, is that statewide county revenues could increase by fifty-seven million a year. The fifty-seven counties giving sixty-five million, and forty-three counties losing seventy point five million. And of course, not surprisingly, given that most of the increases accrue to the ten counties with nonprofit, claiming eight hundred fifty thousand dollars or more, uh, that we are, we're definitely watching that. Of course, another thing that was dropped that we're so proud of is the taxation of hospitals, which was a top moral mission, about sixteen million. You know, they've now become a full, a full length partner with Angel Medical Center. So, we're glad that that's, or some things, some good things and bad things, but apparently they took a week off and talked with some of them down there. Uh, the, the budget is, you know, and then I think the governor even come out and said, it looks like they may have to postpone any tax reform until, uh, next year, that they keep getting, uh, a little bit farther away. But the good news is that the scenic budget has come a whole lot better toward the House, which we certainly are in support of. So, that's something like that.
Jack, motion, Doug, Wes, you want to do the southwestern point?
Who is?
We have, uh, you know, we have Dr. Thomas here, uh, with us tonight, and I know, um, the last meeting, I guess it was, we appointed Mr. Pete Penland to go back on the southwestern board, and, uh, I got a call from, a call from Mr. Penland. I think the county manager got a call from Mr. Penland. I think Dr. Thomas, I, he, he asked to, uh, to have his name removed and not want to, uh, be reappointed and express that. I think the county manager, certainly myself, and Dr. Thomas, I'm going to address that. He's definitely served, uh, you know, for years.
Good evening. I guess first and foremost, I want to thank you for your support of education within Macon County, and in addition to the support of, uh, SEC. Um, we have a long established relationship with Macon County in the future, everything we have planned and anticipate, uh, planning. But, uh, Mr. Penland has indicated his, uh, desire to step down from our board of trustees. It's a sad day for us because of his exemplary It's a sad day for us because of his exemplary service over the number of years that he's been with. He's been a stellar board member and has done a lot of positive things in decision-making for our policy for S E C. But it is his desire at this point in time to step down. We look forward to, we've always made a favorable appointment for S E C and that appointment, whoever that may be, we will support and look forward to working with him as a representative of Macon County. I appreciate Joe's support.
I know we got, we had a recommendation from you and from Mr. Bell, for Mr. Penland and we honored that request. You guys have a recommendation?
We do. And the recommendation that has been brought forward this evening with Mr. Jeff Flure for the replacement of Mr. Pete Penland.
May I add, Mr. Chairman, that Jeff Flure has now served, he already serves on the foundation for S E C and been very active with S E C. Of course, he's a local business person here and very interested in not only supporting S E C, but the group of S E C. A lot of us are.
So he's currently your foundation board, he's appointed to your board, would he-
You have to, yes, I am.
I was in the foundation board.
Correct, yes, I am. Two years in foundation, worked out for a little over two years and is in the capacity as vice president. So he is very active, he's very willing and busy with Jeff this morning and is very excited about the possibility of being a board trustee and he's worked very much in service. It's, it would be a great choice and we look forward to that, if that's the desire of county officials.
This is, this is recommendation to Jackson.
This is a recommendation, the actual form, which is Jackson.
We don't actually make you a-
Correct, correct. That's correct.
So then, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we recommend to the Jackson County Board of Commissioners, for Mr. Jeff Flure to be appointed to the Board of Trustees, where S E C replaces longstanding members of the P E C.
Motion in a second to recommend Jeff Flure. Any discussion about the nomination? You're in all the favor, see if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Moved? That motion passes.
Thank you all very much.
Do you want to notify Mr. Flure?
Yes.
So that-
Do that or-
I guess, actually, I guess we need to send a letter. We sent it to the county commissioner.
That's correct.
If you get that letter.
And we can notify and select it to replace Pete and then the letter is Jackson's permission and then on that, then we notify Jeff the visiting.
Great. Thanks, Jeff. Mr. Wharton has requested some time to make a presentation for us tonight.
Jack? My name is Mr. Chairman.
I didn't have it replaced.
I, I'm not, as you know, around the place we told about something that's been on my mind and would like to make an announcement tonight. Run it down so it wouldn't bumble around here and lose concentration on what I'm trying to say. So you'll bear with me a little bit, I'll try to get through this. It was Monday, February the ninth, nineteen seventy six, when I walked into the county administrative offices in Strank County and I began what turned out to be a career local government, staying in work three and a half decades. In addition to Macon County, I've served as county manager in three other counties as well as city manager for a term, a two-year term. With my service in local government, I've gotten out for more than thirty-six years and the time has come for me to make a difficult decision as to how long I intend to work in this capacity. During my career, I've served multiple boards and been privileged of working with hundreds of dedicated department heads and county employees. It's been my pleasure to serve Macon County now, two different ages. First, it was from October nineteen eighty-five until March nineteen ninety-one and currently since January two thousand eight. I am indeed proud of the immediate accomplishments that have been made since becoming your county manager. During my first term of service with Macon County, we built the Ink of Order and now call it the Business Development Center. We also built the Public Safety Training Center, now dedicated in honor of Jared Sutton. We added on to the Macon County Public Library, made school improvements following, following the bond referendum of the eighties. And last but certainly not least, we actually cited and permitted a landfill there in the county for us. And since returning to Macon County, I've, I've been privileged to be involved in many work projects that will provide long-term benefits to the citizens of Macon County. Together, we have instructed three new schools, Mountain Valley, Mountain View Intermediate School, the Early College High School, the Old Valley Elementary School. We also expanded the Franklin Elementary School, renovated the Nana Ava School, we renovated, made improvements, including a new soccer field at the Highland School, made improvements to Franklin High School, we're able to provide a million and a half dollars to the school system for improvement of their information technology services. In terms of infrastructure, we have completed the long overdue Tennessee, Little Tennessee Cartugia Sewer Interceptor, and we had a final inspection on that this morning, by the way. Also, Howie Twenty-Eight River Banister Swiss Colony Water Bodies have been completed, extensions to the Macon County Airport, and we added a new solidway transfer station in Highlands. We acquired and renovated the new sheriff's office on Palmer Street, renovated the Barrett Building with a state-of-the-art emergency communications center. We passed an animal control ordinance, instructed and put into operation a new animal shelter. We renovated and relocated our Franklin EMS base to Holly Springs Shopping Center, renovated a new library into a new single services community resource center. We renovated the Hudson Library in Highlands. We renovated the Business Development Center to create new opportunities for small business entrepreneurs here in Macon County. County has also acquired the historic Floyd Bridge and the Cowie School for a Macon County Heritage Center. County has acquired Martha Meadows property for a new park and recreational facility and made improvements to the current county recreation park, pool and pool house. We created in this county, the Macon County Medallion of Honor in recognition of those from this county who have gone above and beyond the long-term debt, saved the county over two point seven million dollars in that, and put in place a comprehensive long-range development plan as well as a comprehensive county employee job description classification compensation plan. I'm pleased that we have cultivated a very good working relationship with Board of Education and with our municipal governments of Franklin and Highlands, and I sincerely hope that the joint meetings that we started six years ago will continue in the future. Over the past five and a half years with responsible plans, planning Macon County has consistently maintained one of the lowest property tax rates in the whole state while maintaining a strong fund balance and providing a consistent level of service to our citizens and even increasing our bond rating from an A to an A plus. These things don't just happen by accident. They happen because people of vision work together for the common good of all citizens. I've enjoyed my tenure with Macon County as your county manager and support and the respect that I have received from the Macon County Board of Commissioners, from our county employees and the citizens of Macon County. But time has come for me to consider retiring from my profession, pursue other goals and objectives that I've long ignored or postponed. So it's my intent therefore to retire from my position as your county manager, October the first, two thousand thirty nine. I stand ready to assist the board in any way I can as you prepare for the recruitment and selection of a qualified replacement to serve as your county manager.
Sure. Jack, if we could vote not to accept this, I'd love to entertain that money. But leaning with you, you not talking about this, I know you've talked to your family and other folks tonight. I respect your decision, I regret it. Looked up and involved in enough statewide meetings, regional meetings, to know that Jack Wharton is possibly the best county manager in state of North Carolina.
Probably the most respected.
And when you, when you talk to county managers and county commissioners from other counties, they share that same respect. That's not just a respect that we have for Macon County. Sometimes it's hard to appreciate somebody that's right in your own county. It's, it's hard to say that happy, happy he be the best county manager compared to other county boards. I've seen, I've seen that other county managers work what they do and we got some goodness in North Carolina. I think Jack Wharton's top of it. While I respect your decision, I regret it.
Chairman Charles Wedman, Jim Davis, Brian McFelly, Bobby Sinsen and myself. I think each one of them would agree what I'm about to say, that the most important decision we've ever made, and probably one of the, if not the best decision, and I believe you gentlemen would say the same, was the hiring of Jack Wharton. And since then, he's served with four or five more county divisions. And Jack Wharton is well respected throughout the state, respected by all the T, she's the liaison to all the state county managers. If you picked her phone caller right now, she would tell you that Jack Wharton is probably the most respected. I know for a fact he is in the process right now of tutoring three county managers, that they call him, if not daily, weekly. Three county managers from the region now. So Jack Wharton has done a lot of things for Macon County and the mannerisms he's had with the county employees. And so, but, but Jack, I don't blame the people, see where they're in, such as Granny Young, I don't blame them. And, but I think, you know, if sitting, being able to serve citizens of Macon County, but I believe these are the four gentlemen who would agree with me tonight and today would agree on the package for your employment, because it was the best vote and probably most important vote I've ever made and I don't regret many of it, and I thank you so much.
I'd say the same thing, Jack, we appreciate it. Like I say, if I told you this, we always do, we always have all the different members figure things out, we could, and I think sure we will.
And we will take good upon that life sentence by the law. So, well, I talked to Jack about this today. I think we would ask Mr. Wharton to help, help guide us in dislocating candidates for the job, help us in however this warrant sees fit. Obviously, that's a decision that the five of us have to make. We certainly appreciate his help and guidance as we go through that. I guess, Jack, I guess the purpose of the business would be, we would, we need to publicly announce that we need to be a county manager.
I would, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest strongly that along with yourself and the county attorney, have Mr. Wharton be very involved in the job description for Macon County. And that's what you need first. So we can take what we want to do.
Agree. I talked to you about that today. I guess, just do we, do we just acknowledge that? Obviously, we vote to accept it, we acknowledge it.
I think it'd be appropriate to vote to accept it with, with the same intention.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, as I have, and Lynn talked to Jack about it. Anybody, if anybody's big, he can stay on his feet, so, but I don't, I don't regret, I'm glad Jack's getting that pay for the family. So it's, it's with regret and motivation, but happiness that we get to see Jack move on, he'll be part of this community job, I'm sure. So I'll make the motion to accept. Mr. Jack Wharton, county manager of Macon County, resignation as of end of September, with the option of him being able to help us in the future, as being-
I'm certain with the highest of my expectations.
Okay, motion in a second to accept his retirement effective October the first, two thousand thirty, any discussion?
Jack, I think that is our relationship over the years, I believe, a couple times we've been here, and I do appreciate first in your service and when you see the best in your next, your next line. You enjoy it.
Any discussion? All in favor of accepting, seeing if I'm saying aye? Aye and opposed? Motion passes. Mike, if it would be okay for the chair, you gentlemen, to instruct Mike with the assistance of Jack to formulate a job description, if that'd be fair, to bring that back to us and we begin the process, I guess we can start this advertising right away, Jack.
The county news will be published again.
County lives?
County lives will be published again next- It's twice a month. So the next one is June, we won't get ready to be obvious. But I do believe they also have those postings online. They, they need to go on the meeting. We need to go ahead. Well, it was fifteen fires last week, so we might be in the final.
Let's go ahead and have those.
We'll have a reception with good food under the two picket columns.
We'll, we'll plan something for sometime in the month of September. Motion taken. We'll give a, you got a little recense?
Yes. You ain't got nobody to resist this?
Wait a minute.
No professional?
No. Nobody on the cross. All right. We'll send a recense. Five eighteen minutes. Chris? We're two. Laura, gentlemen, we're to nine, I think, nine A. Request Macon County School regarding current expense as their liaison, I'll press this. If you remember the superintendent who passed and knew, as well as the chairman, asked us with, if we would give them some flexibility with their budget as far about their budget, being able to move line items and that kind of thing, and we indicated to them that we would. And they, they asked for that last meeting, we asked them for that letter and they've done that. So the letter should be, if everybody got that, and they're requesting flexibility to move money from their, I guess that'd be current expense to, well, within, within current. So they've made that request, we give them that flexibility, no new money. It's, we accept the letter for a request, have a teacher supplement line item transferred into current expense with the funding in current expense, Macon has going to have the flexibility to continue compensate acting staff if need be during two thousand thirteen for the school year. Thank you for your consideration, et cetera. That's for Dr. Thomas.
Just one question I have about that is, this is a supplement, that part of the pay that teachers pay, we always, and these teachers, this is part of the pay, we have my plan. So is this money, are they going to let them come and request it as they need it?
Yeah, our current expense, the line item is seven million plus dollars in current expense that the county has proven to profit for them this year, divided up into one twelve. They get one twelve of that each month. Whether they need all over the month, they get one twelve of each month. The money that sends a line item for a supplement for teachers is in a separate line item and it's only spent, and they send us the list of people we want to get the supplement now, which it is, and then we send them a check for that amount out of that line item, just one time a year, I think. They're, they're, they're saying that they don't know how much of that they might not need, so I talked to Lori and I take our recommendation that we believe it in the line item and send right now, and if they decide they need part of it in current expense, only transfer the amount that they need at that time, instead of taking the entire amount and dividing it by twelve and giving it to the bills, you got a good chance of it all being diluted. by twelve and giving it to them, you got a good chance of it all being diluted and dissipated before they have a chance to.
And I think that's what they're asking for.
I think they are.
And what we do is vote to allow that to be done.
Allow it to be, allow it to be moved from time to time from the supplement to current expense based on a specific request for a specific amount of money from the board.
That's right. It's, I think that's further what, that's what I'm hoping for.
You're right.
So I would entertain motion if we grant that request. I did, I asked before. I did, I did.
As soon as I, under the, under the specifications and the steps that county managers lay there, I make that's, that's proper. We want to transfer it as they requested for that line item, this line, we'll leave it in the line.
And, and we'll come back to the board as a matter of approval on this specific amount of line item, A, the line item B.
I'll say.
Hey, we have motion and a second, any discussion? I gotta ask you like this, does this take money away from the teachers? It'll be up to school. It's a, it may potentially, potentially reduce the supplement, but it may be used to pay teachers. But what they're saying is, we might need some of that money for, to pay regular salary to compensate. So all we're doing is giving them the flexibility to do that.
Well, I answered your question, I'm serious about that. This is an agenda item.
The way I see it is, that's an elective board or something.
They have a lot of their own policies, they just can't really explain it, they're introduced that. In reality, it's, so I got to understand that stuff.
Okay. When is the, when is the, four eighty four? I'll just say, I said this, four, and I'm told, Dr. Baldwin is, and told this, really my, my desire that they would not use that to account for current expense, but they believe that's mine, because that is part of the teacher's pay. But it's, again, I respect the fact you're elected board, and I agree with the fact you're elected. Our job is to decide what we can afford to give them, in, in certain criteria, I think we're pretty glad they did what's good.
I'll be honest with you, I always ask a lot more times, don't you? No, it's fixed, fixed, it's like, hey. Money in, in the A's.
I appreciate you. Any other discussion? If you're done, all the favor of the motion, seeing as I'm saying aye, aye, opposed? Motion is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. We have, item B is the property, exactly part of the property we can take. Gentlemen, sorry, I ran this back up to Chester. I'm saying this wrong, please correct me.
When I had the agreement with Fishers and the Crockards about price of the property, swap of the property, attached Zachary Bill and Hobbins, we had agreed, I'd agreed, we had agreed to bill closing costs associated with that. Because we've already advertised in the essence of time, we can't change our advertising and swap it up like it was supposed to. Chester backed me up with today, Jack, was that we moved the purchase price from one hundred and forty-five thousand to one hundred and forty-six thousand again. I told those two gentlemen, I'll tell you all the public later. I want to see this deal go through, if y'all are in favor with it, great. I'll put a thousand dollar present, make sure it's still in the state. See the items.
Well, there's another thing, wasn't the amount of true property that actually surveyed here was a little more than what it was? It was a little, I mean, I would just intend for.
We're not changing what we voted on, Jack, with this.
Actually, you would be, well, you voted on two different things. First, you have, you have voted to approve the exchange. And cause that, that particular exchange had to be advertised, cause consideration if any, in addition to the exchange of properties, had to be included in that. We can't really change the terms of that exchange. But on the other hand, it includes.
That goes against that.
Actually, it did not address closing costs, and basically each party would be covering their own source of costs.
When we presented the contract that you signed, maybe they had some kickback there that they would, they'd agree that they would cost on this, obviously, it would be costing a thousand dollars.
But we can't change that without having to go back and re-advertise. They're anxious to close, and if they can come to terms, but my understanding is this is a deal, and the bottom line is, if you recall, that exchange property is, I think the county is really less interested in that exchange property, hold on, I'm not interested in it, it's going to happen unless, unless the net amount comes to them, you know, to put that topic on the region. And so, in order to accomplish that, without changing the terms of the exchange, the only thing that we can come up with is to make an offer to slightly increase the closing costs.
The original, I don't think, one and a half favors, after the line was straightened out, it became one point seven, it was one and three quarters favors. But the county's offered one point five compensation, favor made for the one point seven.
We're just counting about a thousand. Again, I don't want to do the work out of county's backboard, but I have a question.
Second. Hey, we have a motion, second, and state exactly what that is.
I think it would simply be to increase the purchase price offer for the question from one forty-five to one forty-six. I think it'd be also appropriate to note that the, there are some minor changes in this, in this contractual proposal. They wanted a shorter examination period, which county manager, except for, we probably may be, probably may be held, as well as a sooner closing date, to get up to common ability. And then a statement of how the closing costs would affect the purchase would be handled, or how the closing costs would affect the exchange. Those have been provided and revised in.
Basically, we agree, swap the lands and county managers' expenses, have closing say, when you send them down, you've got to get some, you chart the charts there. They've got to take that income somehow in way that it was coming, so.
Ultimately, if you're, if you're in agreement with this general concept, what we would need is a motion to approve this revised agreement to purchase and sell real estate property. And basically, that I have a favorite, well, decision, this would affect the counteroffer to their county.
So that, your, his motion is true, or is that? Second.
Yeah. There's a law here in the room.
Any, any, any discussion?
Not personally, I didn't support it the first time, you didn't not pick it on Jack.
No, no, no. I wouldn't, I wouldn't think about it, with Jack and I. My only amendment to that thought would be, the property is actually worth more than we thought it was, because it's a larger, it's a larger piece of land than we thought after we made the survey.
And we've gotten that from a positive view.
Oh, from Hobbins, I think.
Found this out at nine o'clock this morning, I had to see.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? That motion passes.
I just want to be sure, so you're saying we give you a thousand dollars more, and they're going to take that money and use it for closing, rather than you guys actually doing it, right?
Well, we're, we're going to justify better.
Basically, what, what it amounts to is the exact amount of closing expense is not known.
Okay. But is what, the most you guys are going to give toward is a thousand?
It's not really to closing, it's, it's basically so that we can acquire a piece of property that we want to acquire.
Well, I get it, I get it.
And it, it's not going to happen unless they net a certain amount of money.
So they're okay with paying what's going to be the closing cost then? Because you're going to give them a thousand dollars more?
We're hoping that to be the case, we've got preliminary, preliminary indication that that would be accepted.
Okay. Under D. Business, we've got a consideration contract back. Chris, talk, so Chris.
Thanks, sir. I guess you've had time to look this over, and I know Chester's going to want to say something about this shortly, but this is a contract to complete the hydro geological investigation of cell three, which you may remember is kind of the first step in overall development of cell three. And this work, to proceed and install and do the investigation takes one year of looking at high water tables, or seasonal variables. Although they look now, it's probably as high as it's been by some time, but based on, when this data comes back, basically, that's when we determine what size of the landfill, how much airspace, how much we can use, what we can, things like that. So this is the, this is the first step. We sent out in May, April or May, RFQs. We had four respondents. We evaluated those respondents, and then met with, interviewed this company and resulting proposal, a contract is, is ultimately. Other than answering questions, I have not much more I can tell you. Like I said, I know, I know Chester wants to talk about some language that we'd like to add, at least, before we, before we.
Yeah, just in a nutshell, the contract proposal indicates that the estimated cost would be one hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred dollars. However, when you go down to the bottom of that proposal, there's an acceptance sheet that's signed by the county, and it specifically indicates that the compensation services would be based on the attached schedule fees. You'll see a schedule of fees attached to that same document that basically says it will be forty dollars for this, twenty dollars for that, forty dollars for this, whatever the numbers are, but they're a very definite schedule. And if, if you use that literally, then basically, they're giving you an estimate, but they're not tied to that estimate. They're ultimately going to be charging according to that schedule of fees, theoretically could be much more than your estimate, theoretically it could be less than your estimate. And in combination with the county manager, my recommendation would be that that language be revised, that be clear, that be legal, that be performed, all of the services that are identified in that, in accordance with the schedule, notwithstanding that, the entire cost of the services set for the contract shall in no event exceed one hundred and seventy-six thousand.
So if you use that language, it could be less, it couldn't be more.
That's the idea.
Would that go, can you, in part, and, friends?
No, and I've already spoken with BLE. I spoke with Andy yesterday, and he has no problem with that language. I think basically, this is, this is a fairly straightforward project. It's laid out explicitly how it's to be done. BLE has knowledge of both, they actually did this work on cell two, and some preliminary work as part of the design, the side criteria on cell three. So I think their, their presumption is, we know enough about this to know what we're going to have to do. But short answer is, he has no problem with all of that language.
Chris, is this proposal the only we got?
This, it's the only, it's the only proposal we got, I'm going to make this, I don't want to make assumptions, but I'm going to make an assumption in answer to this. It's the only proposal we got that has a dollar in it. What we, for this type of service, you cannot, you can't do it. It's illegal. You have to do it by qualification. And so we asked for a statement of qualifications and had four respondents. Of those respondents, we, there's a grading process, and the one that receives the highest grade, you then enter into money discussion. So, so the short, yeah, the answer to the question I assume you're asking is, this is the only money that's been discussed. However, in a larger sense, if you ask about the proposal, again, this is a fairly straightforward, how this has to be done. So in all of these statements of qualifications, well, not all of them, three of, the work to be done was identical. I mean, how many wells you have to put in, and how deep they have to go, things like that. So if we got more than one proposal, then we're all virtually the same, but this is the only one with a dollar.
Basically, under the North Carolina statute, any purchasing contract counties are required, you solicit proposals for engineering, professional design services, you have to make that basis, make a selection based on qualifications instead of costs. After you make your selection based on the most qualified person, then you enter in negotiation to discuss how you're going to cost. That's written in the state statutes, we have a choice of, what Chris is saying, is we did that, we had four qualified proposals, we reviewed all those, and checked the pluses and minuses of each one. And by far, I guess BLE came out ahead of the other three. We've used them on a couple of occasions before, on RFQs, in particular, so they're a regular partner.
And like I said, they, they did this project for, for cell two, exactly.
And this proposal, we look at this for property.
Yeah, absolutely. Before you, before you can go in, and I don't want to get into Chris's killer's thunder here, but I know a little bit more about it than most people in my position, because I've done it. Basically, what they've got to do is come in and show you what the water table is, and what the rock is, and then you've got to design your cell based on that criteria.
Yes, yes.
We, I mean, we know, we've had on the books a, a, a footprint for cell three for eighteen years, but before that, and actually, you put it into a design and construct, this process has to happen. I can't believe anybody asked, but I'm going to have to, the money for this project is , is what you, you.
I already asked. Only other change that I can see that need to be made is more than the three hundred dollars.
And just as a matter of function, Andy was, Andy was fine, if we wanted to prepare a document to attach to this, or he said that we could include that language on the special instructions, and then just sign this document.
I would move on with the exception of Chester's recommendation of one hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars of water, water that hopefully be maximum.
Give a second. Second. Motion, and a second, any discussion?
Twenty-nine point four of discussion. Let me make one point of discussion. What, what everybody says is fine. The, if there is a change, as with any other project, that would not be based on their rates, they just start charging more at it and I would sort of stop it. If there is a change, and I can describe what a change would be, but if there is that kind of change, that would have to happen through an approved changelord. So it still could happen.
It would be brought to you.
It would be brought to you. And, and to that end, I guess, the, the, the type of thing to be a changelord, you know, if you, if you run in rock and have to drill more, or if you don't find the water table where you suspected would, or if you had to add additional wells because of some geologic feature that nobody knew about until we started looking, that's the kind of thing that could cause a change. But again, they have a lot of known knowledge, a base knowledge. I don't think that's, I don't think that's going to happen. I think they're, I think they're good at what they do and there's enough background information. As a matter of fact, they've already kind of amended their plan from our discussion based on some new topographical maps that, that we've, Mc Gill was able to provide from our last year's survey. They, they've changed some of what they want to do, but it's a net the same amount of footage. It's just some are shallower and some deeper, but I think that's about the biggest modification there would be through this whole project, and it's already happened, it was a net.
Okay.
Their billing will be based on their standard schedule, right?
That is correct, but once they tap down a hundred seventy-six thousand, they got twenty.
Then that's complete.
And you'll approve, you monitor the work unless there's a change.
You, I mean you.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Motion passes.
Have you kept up with city bills, the sideways bill that if you're chairman and myself, we've worked on for, I know for, I have some five years of, I don't know how long, you know where it's at now?
Well, there's a couple of different ones. I know one, elimination of the tenure plan that passed today and it's moving back to the.
Now, the city added things about white goods, about tire, about four cabs to that, and it's gone back to the house, then approved a change. It looks like that's going to be approved and might be on the government desk as early next week, so.
That's, every three years, that's six weeks in my line.
Yeah, that's right. I mean, it's just a lot of, it's a lot of cost to the counties, a lot of cost to this county.
Well, well, y'all did better than most because we didn't hire consultants and I did.
We appreciate it. I know you put a lot of work in there. But it still was a lot of.
Well, the thing about it is, is, you know, back in the eighties, I guess, from the early nineties, when this thing started, you know, we, we didn't know what we know now. And that was kind of my point when we first started having discussions through the Swan organization is, you know, it's actually not a guidance document anymore. Counties can't get away with not paying attention to recycling. It's in our own benefit interest and our citizenry demand, so we don't need this document to hold our feet in fire. We've got a number of power anyway. It actually became more of a hindrance because if I wanted to make, I did this, I left everything open ended, but if we wanted to make a change for our program, even for the better, we had to amend this agreement, come back to you, if you could re-agree to the agreement, go back to the towns, get them to re-agree. So it really became more burdensome and helpful, so I'm, I'm happy to see.
I think what you're going to see is more fines and easier to find illegal dumping, and I think you're going to see that as part of this deal. And I have read that, but I think that's going to be part of it.
Of course, the bigger bill is, how long, what was it, eight twelve? It's basically the bill, the short burden is the bill to repeal fourteen ninety.
That's three twenty-one.
Three twenty-one. So that's the one we're really wanting.
Good. Thank you, Chris. Under B, Richard Melvin requests, Andy attorney, you have that question?
Yes, gentlemen, Mr. Melvin is, represents an individual who acquires some, sorts of real estate, and at the time of the transfer, there were transfer stamps, revenue stamps put on the deed. The amount put on the deed was eighteen hundred dollars. That amount was put on by the state, the amount should have been twelve hundred based on the purchase price. In nutshell, Mr. Melvin has requested the, this board pursuant to, coming back to one of five, that we should get one thirty-seven, to make a refund of that over the table. What I wanted to do tonight is very limited, and that's just to bring to your attention that request that been made and noted by you, make sure you were aware, commission request to have a hearing on that request. In order to do that, we've got to give the taxpayer notice of that, of that hearing, and there's time limitations. If we do that at your office meeting, you'll be welcome to do the time limitations.
We're going to do the hearing.
Yes, you have to do the hearing. Basically, you're.
What's the point of that?
The point of that is to make sure you're satisfied that he's entitled to refund it according to the statute.
The flat end of the state, right?
It's a hearing, which I think they, I think they're going to put on ahead. Basically, they've got to review the evidence.
But we didn't know if they're standing or not.
No, they, they made a settlement.
Who did? The attorney, the clerk.
Whoever settled upon the amount of revenue put on the deed maybe.
So they, in other words, just here would be a chance to. So that would be at the office meeting?
And I would ask for your authority to provide the requisite notice.
Any motion?
I think the deed, I don't, I think you can just tell me there's a consent.
You have a chance to do it.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, you see that.
Thanks, sir. T and C, I believe my information with county manager is correct, the four of us are going to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners annual meeting, and we have to designate a voting delegate for that. Mr. Trump and I would like to make a motion that we designate you as Trump of this board as voting delegate to North Carolina Association of County Commissioners taking the conference. You've always kept a wire under the seat just before you put your meaning. The conversation is a very laid and buried, and you've always done a good job, so I'll make that a formal motion. We have a second.
You make a second, you're our chairman, and you're going to put it out for me, you're going to write it down.
I guess. All right. If you're not about to say that I have no energy, don't go. You just made a set of different part.
All right.
Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ouch. Motion passes. Commissioner Tate has brought some information to our attention, and I'll have to say he's worked very hard about this. There is some potential discrepancies where the county line. Yes, Chris, would you like to address that?
It's kind of interesting that a lot of things I've been working on, I've become a commissioner, and finally I've come into life. But I've, I've had some residents of Highlands bringing my attention that there's discrepancies in where Jackson County is showing their county line, where Macon County is showing their line, and where the state is actually maybe showing one. So in order to get this corrected, Jack has been diligently working with our staff, and we had a long meeting this morning on the North Carolina Geodetic Survey and with Jackson County Management. Took about two hours this morning here, and I think we've come to an understanding that if both counties pass a resolution in support of it, that the North Carolina Geodetic Survey will pay for establishing a line. And hopefully, after they establish that, we're going to come to an agreement of where actually that county line is. Presently, in the Highlands area, it literally, if you look at Jackson County's line, you look at where Macon County has their line, and where the state has their line, it literally looks like a double helix that does this all the way across. So we're, we're hoping to get that satisfied, get a line that we can all agree on. There's some properties that are in Jackson County now, which hopefully will end up in Macon County. And there's probably a few large parcels that are in Macon County that may end up on Jackson County. But in my personal opinion, what's fair is fair and what is right is right. And Jackson County will have the same opinion. So I'm hoping that we'll pass this resolution tonight, pass it along to Jackson County in the Geodetic Survey, who'd be interested in their systems and paying for this. The only cost that it's going to have to Macon County would be our time and staff in-house, the government pays for some of the research, some of the parcels, doing some of the jobs. Is that correct?
I think it's important to find out what kind of change the county is trying to put into the state, which is where it is.
Well, I, I just sort of, I might agree Paul Pinn too, he's worked on jobs for, you know, especially if you go to Long Creek, yeah, there's a prime example of him. And the house we get over, the front yard was in Jackson County. The house was in, we think, Macon County, we don't know, they didn't know either, so they, they don't, they don't agree, so they just clarify a lot of things. You work on.
Sagewood is classic, that where you're.
Sagewood, going across Wildcat Ridge.
That's the system that I've terminated for Jackson, not Macon County that were actually installed. And then Jackson County came back, it was not proven, it was a state.
It was, it was come to the determination that this morning's meeting, that a lot of those homes, the taxes we're in charge for, the building. They, they don't know, they don't know if they're in Macon or Jackson County.
No. We have a motion, we have a.
Motion on the resolution. We have a motion, the second, to approve the resolution authorizing the county line survey.
In that particular area.
That's the Comanche, Lee Jackson. In discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ouch. That motion passes. T and E, the county manager's already explained, it's already in our budget to purchase two more ambulances for this year. We have that on the, again, sort of rotating, rotating ambulances. There's two more to be purchased this year, and we have the opportunity, as I understand it, from Jackson County, to buy those under the current structure.
The more to do that, the more to do that, we have to advertise for at least ten days before it tends to take advantage of that first contract provision, what actually takes action on that. So it's going to be before August, we need to advertise before your August meeting, before it goes to those that are around.
Makes sense to me. Are we going to plan to be in L or what?
We, we just bid, just passed all four ambulances, and so we got some really good competitive bids, and the low bidder, the better modifications, is willing to honor that bid for two more, two ambulances, based on the same qualifications that they want to change.
Will they be fourteen, thirteen?
They'll be fourteen, fourteen, I don't think you can get thirteen anymore.
But what that does, really, we can grant, has that today is to give somebody a chance that, well, I can make that bid or whatever.
Well, actually, what it does is it just gives everybody the opportunity to, to basically know that that is what is being, being done, to have the opportunity to come in and give additional information to take with you.
And if, and if not, then we proceed, get the same kind of backlash.
We actually saved twenty to thirty thousand dollars from what we expected to be managed there.
Did that happen this year, we rebid it?
Well, you could, but then, but then if you rebid it, unless, unless you, the lowest you're, you're expected to take, the lowest responsible, responsible bid, if the lowest bid is higher than the bid from last year, then you either take that or you go out the bid again.
And you can reject.
Thing about ambulances, the thing about ambulances is it takes a while to build. They don't just have them to stop it. They don't even start construction until they get the contract, and it takes them four, six months to get one built. Probably, last year, we got the contract out, probably in September, we didn't get the ambulances until sometime February. And we really need them.
And top of the middle, people drives them and works them.
They, they have their issues, that's also, they have their issues with these ambulances. Some are love, some are don't. There's a genetic correction, I've already mentioned, Mr. P, it reduces that. But the pros that I see about this still is that it gives continuity in ambulances. If you have two that are made by this company and the domain out there, two that are made by company B, and then they've got a totally different layout inside the ambulance, different capital locations, different stretcher angle, however it might be, it's a little bit different when you go from ambulance ambulance to ambulance. However, the time on days that you're not putting out for a competitive bid this year is based on last year's, last year's number seven. They're, they're a price gouge.
If you're going to do this, if your bid is less than your. If you're going to do this, if your bid, or someone else's bid, if you're going to piggyback on them, it's less than your.
Oh, would we take two, they think, is it much to the end?
I think that's what.
How much?
Uh, well, actually, it was a hun, one hundred, they were one hundred thousand, four hundred eighty-three dollars each.
Totally.
Two hundred, two hundred thousand.
Two dollars. Yeah. Didn't we have to place something there, put that chair in there, went up and down the step to that thing? Is that going to include any, for the sunny price?
I think it was a sunny price. It was all, it was all over the cost, which included that chair, but we used to change up the chair every time. We'll make sure of that, that it's all included at this price, but I think probably it's supposed to be.
I'm all right on this, if I don't ask for a place to see, I was talking to Dave, they were saying these ambulances, it's going to be another, I think.
With all the wiring you got on these things, it's not going to be able to plug every once in a while, but they, they were really responsive. What we got to do, and you got it back.
I pop the chair, babes. They're, they're comfortable with that.
That's the other thing, you want to make sure that you're about as honest and responsive when they come to.
You're right. I wish your kids were too, to keep their cup, or food, or stuff.
Yep.
Yeah, I see.
I'm big on boards.
I'll take tests if you must.
You just, you just ask confirmation, have the.
To go ahead and make the notifications, advertisement that the, the board could, could actually acquire these ambulances to piggyback instead of when I put another one.
So was, so was, so was Altrich, county attorney, up there.
Go to second. Go to second, what would you take? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ouch. That motion passes. A minute ago, I don't know, we agreed to that, Mr. Tate asked that we direct the planning board to take a vote on the flood ordinance and bring that back to us, they do have a scheduled meeting between now and our next meeting. Is that satisfactory with what you guys have in mind to have you take action on that?
Well, this, this is a good place to do what I said. I think that this is not something that I'm trying to plan for, it's not something I'm calling the state on state's action, or it looks like we're a freak for some reason, but I feel like we're in our own state. I feel like that our ordinances should be set on the same standards as the state. And if not, I'm trying to step out. I mean, whether they've gone again in the state, whether they've gone down, I feel that for the people out there, I think that our standard should be set at state standards, and I'd like to make that motion.
Now, I'm just clarifying, I think what Mr. Tate recommended is if we asked the planning to vote on that and bring regulations back to us. Is that what you did? This passes, and that's it.
Don't we need to identify the ordinances that you're concerned about?
I'm talking about blanket overall, any ordinances we have, I think that they should be up to the state, the same standards.
I think the, some ordinances, the county have, state doesn't have issues, they don't have any kind of that.
They don't even regulate some of the plans that we regulate.
Right.
So you're saying that.
Yeah, the situation is there was nothing there that we have to do, what I'm talking about, when it comes to building these stations, whatever we've got, I think it should be set on the state, and that's the way it is. Same way about this flood. Same way about this flood plan. I mean, I think that this ordinance here, if you're going to fill something with good dirt, whether it be there or twenty miles away, I can't see a difference in that, I think that it should be, that if it's good use for dirt, you fill it, I think these sort of standards should be state standards, and us give it a statement.
All I'm suggesting is, is to, the need to identify the ordinances that county wants to look at, because otherwise, you have to sign somebody in the county government, a monument of acts of reviewing every ordinance the county has. That book is this thick, gentlemen, that thick, against state statutes. Now, there are particular ordinances that you've got questions about, that are being more stringent than state regulations, those can be dealt with much more easily than the blanket one.
There's votes on the floor either.
Maybe I'll go soon. Well, I'll retract. I'll retract the motion I'm making, and I'll come forward with some claim written there. So I'll change this one right now. In this flood plan, I make a motion that this is state standard.
Okay, we have a second.
But we're asking the planning board to make a recommendation to this board first?
That's what...
It was. Now, we're... I think the original determination from the board was taking the planning board and see what they have to allow. Commissioner Aven is saying let's not discuss with the planning board and let's vote on it.
We asked them not to vote on it, so that's exactly the reason the Chester was mentioning, because the state's considering what Commissioner Aven was mentioning, it's not allowing counties to have. In the areas that they protect.
Yeah, so we're going to strictly split plane orders right now. I said one in motion, that one people...
Any discussion on motion? Mr. Chairman, it's really, we, I was, again, planning work for position purposes, we do, and we're very hard on this, and so I wouldn't even consider it to be a recommendation.
I think you've got a lot of public outcry at county and planning board, I think you directed the planning board to do the right thing, and you've had a lot of discussion through the planning board. Commissioner Tate is the agent, I'll be back there.
There'll be a lot of folks want to come before this board to speak to this, sir.
Commissioner Aven, I do not have a problem with the motion, as the liaison to that board, I'm a major confidence on that.
But now, if you're willing to direct us to make the talk already, kind of some sort of final vote on it.
I'm hoping that's... And Ron, I agree, I think we need to see it knowing, but we have asked the planning board to do, and I think what Jim asked earlier, that like we agreed to, is you were wanting them to vote and bring a recommendation to us, and then we'll have the opportunity to do whatever we disagree, this board can agree or disagree.
Yeah, I support the planning board making a decision, but if not, you know, it falls on...
All in favor, Mr. Chairman?
All in favor of the motion, signify, raise your right hand.
Aye.
So we'll, we've asked the planning board to make the decision and bring it back to us.
As a matter of fact, if you believe me and all of that, I appreciate it.
So we'll go after the elected chairman.
We'll go elect the chairman, if you agree.
Thank you. Gentlemen, we're moving along, hopefully, hopefully get through this. Thanks, Mr. Trump.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. The consent agenda includes minutes of our June eleven, thirteen, seventeen meetings, the budget amendments one, two, and three that you received in your email packet, and items, budget amendments four and five that you have in front of you. The consent agenda includes tax places monthly, our own tax report. Is there an item that you guys are about to remove from the consent agenda? I don't have four, I don't have...
Four was an attachment that might email out.
I didn't get the attachments on one, two, and three. How do you get, how do you take it, how do you...
There was one, there was a...
Have they, have one budget amendment?
Yes.
I had to bring mine out, I put there, read it out, follow the wheel, the line.
That's there on, in your package. You want to see that?
Eight thirty, okay.
Thirty-one.
They're going to be getting right here.
One, two, and three was thirty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's one, and then the next page.
Okay, what was the trend?
And the housing is number two, John Fay.
Thank you, sir.
Three was the TBA forestry grant.
And they don't deal with grants and stuff, right?
And number four is, is the sheriff.
Number four is a carrier. The sheriff's department, highway's, government, that's the person.
The highway's, okay. Well, we're not all about it either here.
And in advance, we've got number five was given to us tonight.
It has to go, it's just part of the program.
That's number five. Number five was one of the... Oh, one of those forty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars equipment paid. I, I can't get my computer on, we were, forty-seven, it's actually the, you don't play that one here.
Transit one?
The other.
That's the one I laid at your desk tonight. This one is, this is to buy a bus, I guess you'd call them one of the transit buses or vans, whatever the proper terminology is. She did not receive the state order, there's a process when you order, that comes from grant money, you have to get an order, she did not get the order in hand, or the place to receive.
Well, we received...
It's clearly programmed.
Yes.
Yes, we have revenue. Our part is four thousand nine eighty-four, and we get forty-two thousand one fifty-nine of grant funds. There's a ten percent county match, and then there's something with the bottom one that she's paying us additional three hundred dollars to send trade more.
Okay, gentlemen, any, any one of those items you'd like to have removed and discuss individually would be that? Just a comment, Mr. Chairman, on the housing, this is a second week of world changers, and thanks to the media, first, perfectly, extremely well, and this week, along with the rain, there's a lot of painting going on this week, so, church has donated an excess of seven hundred dollars for paint products, and we've got a lot of guns in American County and they're painting a lot of, and I'll ever invite if you want to have... If you want to come and sell these kids at once, my church is hosting them every night for corporate meetings, and they, I was by last night, and we grew about two hundred fifty, thank you. Two fifty, maybe. There's a lot of gifts, a lot of make the assets. Yes, ayo. All right, gentlemen, any items you want to remove? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
A motion to second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye, aye, aho.
That motion passes. Gentlemen, we already did the planning board and the Southwest Community College Board, the cemetery board that we established has five seats, and Jack, I'm only aware of one application.
We have three big to express, the next president, Barbara McPray.
Mr. Slater.
Mr. Slater and Drew Baller. The young, young man.
It's started the conversation.
I don't know, I don't know.
So the motion, we have a motion to second to add Wes Slater, Barbara McPray, and Andrew...
Andrew Baller.
Any other, it's my second, yeah. Discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye, aho.
We need two more.
Make, make a note, then we just continue to advertise due to more... I would ask Barbara, she's, she's the, she's the Macon County historian, so if she could come up with Barbara, come up with two names, it'd be good. And close section if necessary, do we need a close section? About your motion to adjourn? Don't move, all in favor say aye. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies. So if I'll, I'll tell you...